Are you ready?
Yes.
Good evening. I'd like to call this meeting to order and ask that our district clerk leads us in the pledge.
Pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in common.
Good evening, everyone, and welcome. Happy New Year to those of you we have not seen since last year. May I have a motion, please, that the agenda of January 13th, 2015 be approved as submitted? Questions or comments? Thank you, all those in favor. Seven in favor, none opposed. Thank you. May I have a motion, please, to approve the consent agenda as listed? Questions or comments? Thank you, all those in favor. Seven in favor, none opposed. Thank you. In your packet is the treasurer's report for the month of October 2014. May I have a motion, please, that the treasurer's report, including the cash report, general fund cash report, the general fund revenue status report, general fund budget status report, school lunch fund cash report, and school lunch fund revenue, and expense budget report for the month ending October 31st, 2014, be approved? Questions or comments? Thank you, all those in favor. Seven in favor, none opposed. Thank you. We have no special reports this evening. Visitor speaking time. This time is usually provided for any of our residents who wish to address the board. And I have indication here that Jessica Brown wishes to address the board regarding testing. Good evening, welcome.
Good evening. I would like to thank the board for allowing me the time to speak tonight on a matter that may not surprise some. I am here to inform the Penfield School District of my decision to refuse to allow my child, Annabelle Kubrick, to participate in any local assessments tied to APPR for the 2014-2015 school year. I believe and trust in our highly qualified and dedicated teachers and administrators. I believe in the high quality of learning that comes from Cobble's Elementary. I do not believe that these tests are beneficial to my daughter or any child who is subject to these exams. There are many reasons why I'm against this form of testing. It eats up instruction. Teachers are teaching to the test. Scores don't accurately measure learning. It's a one-size-fits-all rollout. They don't value creativity or diversity. But with the budget being high on your agenda, my small argument will come from a fiscal taxpayer perspective. Schools are supposed to be where money is used to educate kids, not where kids are used to earn money. This is a part of what this testing is, a tool to earn federal funding. Our children test only so the district can spend more money on testing. It is not about her education. State testing has nothing to do with her advancing to the next grade level. Her teacher can evaluate the completed exam and use it to aid her in a better understanding of the material. Absolutely no feedback that benefits my child. So who does it benefit? This is a test being administered by the state on behalf of NCS Pearson, a large, private corporation contracted by the state to prepare future tests. Neither Pearson nor the State Department of Education contacted me to ask my permission for my child to take part in what is essentially a product development study for a for-profit, private company. I would advise Penfield School District not to give this exam at all. It is not your place to help a private organization improve their product. I do not give the Penfield School District permission to administer these tests to my child. My daughter is not being opted out because the test might be too hard or because she couldn't handle the length of time or the pressure it instills. It's because she is no money machine for the Pearson Corporation. As you work on a new budget, which I'm sure will spend an extensive amount of new computers, new teaching materials, and new bandwidth for assessment testing, Penfield taxpayers may not be pleased with the idea that, in addition to our children, our tax dollars are being used to help a private corporation develop a product that they will then sell back to the taxpayer. So when considering the budget, consider this. Common Core is not here to stay. The field testing and the current standardized testing is not here to stay. So how much of the taxpayer's money do you really want to invest? I was here last year hoping with anticipation that the board's leadership could help make a difference and take a stand against these testings. This unification is not only for the students but for the teachers and administrators as well. By not taking these tests, Annabelle will not be a party to a system of accountability mandates and a data collection demand that has destroyed teacher autonomy. Teachers that Annabelle and I admire and respect. We will not devalue their profession and years of experience by participating in test-taking of flawed mastery. Our teachers deserve better. I was hoping against hope that Penfield might charge and take the lead as Fairport Schools have and now Webster has. All it takes is your active voice, your willingness to work with other districts to stop the assault on our public education, which we prioritize. To sit back and do nothing, to just shrug your shoulders and say, "Well, this is how things are now. What can we do?" is idle and subsidiary. When you pass a budget with items related to Common Core and state testing, it contributes to the larger issue, inaction. I will hold each and every one of you accountable. Remember whose pockets our taxpayer money is lining. And tests our children take for federal funding is child labor in its most subtle form. And I still have hope. But just in case, parents, my advice to you, opt your children out from these state tests. Opting out is easy. You just say no. Opting out is your right. This means it is not mandatory for your child to actually take it. The schools are just mandated to give them. Opting out prevents stress on your child. My child was anxiety-free last year. Opting out prevents data collection, which invades your child's privacy. Opting out prevents profits for going to the testing companies, which stops wasting our district's money. Opting out is your vote as a parent against Common Core. Action versus inaction. Few people look back on life and say, "I wish I'd become a better test taker." My child won't be one of them, will yours? Thank you.
Thank you. We appreciate your feedback. I think Dr. Putnam would like to say a few words in regards to field testing.
I appreciate. I just wanted to say, we don't always communicate when a community member is able to come and speak, but you talk about field testing, which is near and dear to me, so I just wanted to update you on something. And you also mentioned Cobble's, and everybody here knows that that's where my kids go as well. So I appreciate you taking a stand and having a conversation with the board. I did want to let you know that last night at PAB, which is the residence of all of our parent organizations, our PTSA, PTSA, HSA, PACE, and SEPTA groups, I shared with them a letter similar to the Fairport and Webster letter that you referenced up here, asking them for a grassroots effort to get out through e-news, which I know went out today from all the schools, and it'll go out tomorrow for the others that couldn't get to it today. And that is a link to a letter that I have online, asking the community if you oppose field testing, to email the legislators and the Board of Regents, as well as the committee that's collecting data through January 20th. Is the deadline to let the New York State Board of Education and Board of Regents know that we oppose mandatory field testing. Right now, field testing is an option for school districts, above and beyond the standalone field tests that we give. As a Penfield community member and myself as a parent of two kids at Cobble's, we know that Penfield has always agreed and given field tests. With myself this year being new as acting superintendent, the one change we made after meeting with all the building principals was that we are no longer going to blindly follow the request for field tests, but we'd be reviewing every field test request that came in very specifically on impact to instructional time and impact to student. And unfortunately, the Board of Regents has changed and is now looking at making all field tests mandatory tied to potentially state funding from, you know, state funding that comes to all of our school districts that offset our school budget. So I do ask that you keep an eye out on the e-news that comes from Cobble's, as well as to the greater community. The e-news blast that will come from SEPTA, PACE, and all of the buildings in the district around voicing your concern over the state's look to mandatory field testing and hopefully let the government and the Board of Regents know how strongly we feel about testing of our students that can lead to that feeling and sense of over-testing of our children in schools. So thank you very much, and please consider voicing your opinion directly to the state as well.
Thank you, Dr. Putnam. I do want to take the opportunity on behalf of this board to thank Dr. Putnam for his leadership in having a model letter, bringing this to the appropriate forum, which was the Parent Advisory Board, and really taking the leadership in this role against field testing. So we're very supportive of your efforts and very proud of that. Thank you. Second person who wishes to address the board, Annabelle Kubrick, regards to art.
Good evening and welcome. Hi, my name is Annabelle, and I think that we should have another day of art class during the week. I think this because art is creativity, and creativity helps you think better. It helps you express your mind. I mean, what would we do without art? Art is history and love. Art expresses your feelings and your inner beauty, emotions, and even your personality. Art is showing you the true you. Emotions that you have kept away for a long time. For the kid who wants to be an artist, well, if they only have art once a week, that kid won't get a chance to learn as much as they need to know. Art is color, sound, and light. Art makes the world go around. Art is peace and meanings. When you're reading a book and your teacher tells you to imagine this or picture this, if you don't have art enough, you aren't going to be able to do this. So what I'm trying to say is that art is important to our culture. Thank you.
Thank you, Annabelle. We really appreciate your feedback. This board is very supportive of the arts. Actually, one of the meetings that we love happens, I think, kind of around May, June, when we have, you know, art students that come here. And I'm hoping you can come and join us for this meeting. I don't know that I can promise you that we are able to add more art, but we definitely are very supportive of the arts. Thank you so much. And Lori Bays, in regards to positive events at Bay Trail Learning Walks.
Good evening. Thank you for giving me the time to speak. It's so nice to see some familiar faces here, students and parents. My Bay Trail colleagues and I were planning an outing that included coming to the board meetings, so we decided we should talk to you about some positive things that happen at Bay Trail. We know that you've heard through Wynton-Buddington about learning walks that have gone on at Bay Trail and at area school districts. And we are very proud of what we do at Bay Trail, and we're very proud of this program. Last year, the program included 15 teacher observers in four schools, and this year it includes 45 teacher observers in eight schools. And this was done under the leadership of our principal, Wynton-Buddington, and because of our designation as a national school to watch. We, as teachers and our administrators, are obligated to share our expertise of middle-level students because of this honor, and I think our learning walks is the main way we do that. So I wanted to tell you a little bit about my experience and about the people who came to Bay Trail. I have some cards in front of me, as you might have noticed. People who came to Bay Trail went and had 20-minute visits in different classrooms, art, technology, ELA, math, Phys Ed, all different kinds. And then they would leave good news cards that we would normally send to parents, but they would leave them for teachers. And so yesterday, I asked my colleagues if they would send me their good news cards. And I was really impressed with what I got, and not as surprised as I would have been before I did learning walks in my own school. I've worked at Bay Trail since 1996, and I'm not going to do the math. You can do it yourself later. And I've always been proud of being hired by Penfield. I grew up nearby in Ontario, New York, and this was the big time, you know, working in Penfield. And it's a very nice place. But walking around my school and watching my students a year or two after I'd had them in every single class, the amount of literacy, because that's what we were paying attention to, is astounding. And I'd never been prouder. And when I walked away that day, I was walking tall. It's really nice to feel a part of such a group of professionals. And some of the cards, I'm just going to read a few because you can see the stack is big. I won't read every single one. But I marked some things that people from other school districts said to our teachers in our school to watch. And they told me not to read their names because they were embarrassed of their praise. This card says, "Your class was energizing and fun. You enabled all students to participate. Your questions and tasks repeatedly return students to the vocabulary to build understanding. Thanks for allowing me to observe." Outstanding rapport with students, pushing them to use the target language in an authentic and meaningful manner. Great learning environment. Wow, what an impressive system and environment you have. And people were saying this as they walked even through the halls. They were impressed with how our students walk in halls. That doesn't have anything to do with our professionalism, perhaps our role modeling, but that's also about our parents. I'm sure you are aware. Students knew exactly what to do, where to go, and what materials to gather. Everyone was efficiently engaged. The differentiation made a challenging activity accessible to all. Thank you for inviting us into your room. Students were certainly engaged and synthesized their learning from each other's posters. Your guidance allowed students to integrate their creativity with their rigorous content. I loved your classroom. Your positive rapport with students was obvious. Lucky kids." That's actually from a parent I just noticed and a teacher from Fairport, a Penfield parent. This one said, "I liked the way you pointed out to students the reason for the variety of assignments and activities, all related to the same topic. I'd like to know more about the benchwork quiz that you referred to." And they go on and on. It was really hard to pick for you the best ones because there were so many. And these are all teachers, these were not all literacy teachers, but they were all teaching literacy. I couldn't believe when I went into a technology room, perhaps it was naive of me, but the amount of words that the kids had to read in order to do what they needed to do. And I think that parents should be very happy that their kids go to school here. I've seen them well-treated, and I know I'm really proud to be accepted here as a professional. So thank you for letting me share this.
I have to push back, Lori, just a little bit with you not being willing to take credit for the students' behaviors in the hallways, because I know that as a building in particular, you know, the work that Bay Trail has done around the PBIS model and having those high expectations in every area of the school and everyone consistently enforcing those expectations, that too is part of why our kids are so well-behaved in all areas of that building. So you have to take some credit. Yes, it's our families. It's definitely everyone working together, but you need to take credit where credit is due on that. It is a team effort all the way around. So kudos to Bay Trail. I've heard great things about the learning walks, and I'm very, very proud of what's going on in that building.
Thank you, Jim. I do want to thank you for being here. Out of all the places you could have picked to spend the evening, we're thrilled that you chose the board meeting. So thank you to you and your colleagues for being here. If you can take our appreciation to Bay Trail for everything that is done there. We hear a lot about middle school and what happens in the middle school, and you deal with students at a very difficult age. And somehow, you know, they seem to come out of Bay Trail, having learned so much and having, you know, had very successful experience in middle school. So thank you so much for all that is happening there. All right, we now move on to our student representative. Good evening, Aubrey.
Good evening. In sports, there's a wrestling meet at Schroeder tonight, and hockey played Canadega tonight and tied 1-1 in overtime. Boys swimming has a meet at Pittsford Meddon, and girls basketball is playing against Schrader at 7:45. And last Friday, Penfield High School's leadership class did a Bald for Bucks fundraiser for teens living with cancer, and they raised nearly $7,000. And there was a Math League meet today at HFL. And this Friday, there's a Penfield v. Webster faculty hockey game, and the proceeds go to Gliding Stars of Rochester and Rochester Ice Cats, and it's $6 at the door at the Webster Ice Arena. And the PHS is hosting a talent show Friday, January 23rd, at 7:30. And the PHS dance team has a showcase in the auditorium on Saturday, January 24th. It's $6 in advance and $8 at the door. There's the Fantastic Fine Sale, January 31st, from 9:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. And it's the first time ever that Robotics is hosting a movie premiere of Slingshot at 7:00 p.m. in the auditorium. And it's a movie about a man's 15-year-long journey in solving the world's safe water crisis. And more info on the Pride Week that we're organizing, it's going to be the week before February. We've decided what the dress-up days are going to be and the after-school activities. So on Monday, it's going to be pajama day and with a Gaga ball tournament in the afternoon. And on Tuesday, it's going to be a Western Day. And instead of decorating hallways like we do during homecoming, we're going to do door decorating. And on Wednesday, it's US Day, Pride Day. And weather permitting, there'll be a snow sculpture contest in the front loop. And on Thursday, it's going to be Pirate Day, and the Masterminds Club is going to hold a Jeopardy contest after school. And on Friday, it's Class Color Day, and the staff will be wearing red. 12th grade will be wearing purple. 11th will be wearing blue. 10th will be wearing green. And 9th will be wearing orange. And during the pep rally, we are going to make a huge trivia crack wheel, since that's popular, and then there'll be trivia games, and there'll be musical cheer games and other things. And we're still ironing out the details about how the Pride Rally will be run, since we can't have the entire school in the gym at once. And so we might run two at once in both gyms or one before the other. And lastly, students are studying up for their midterms that are closely approaching.
All right, thank you, Aubrey. Board members, any questions or comments for Aubrey? Aubrey, usually we are invited to the homecoming pep rally. Are we going to be invited to this one?
Yes, of course.
All right, thank you. Especially if there are outdoor activities like the ice sculpture one or snow sculpture one, you know, we'd love to see that too. So thank you. All right, we now move on to our superintendent's report. Dr. Putnam?
Thank you. You know, I spent most of my day at the high school today because I had some meetings here. And so hearing what's happening during that sort of spring pep rally week, I might have to move my office to the high school for that entire week because I think I'm going to miss that unless I can get Mark and Jim and Marcia to all dress in orange and blue and, you know, we could maybe bring it there.
Do you see my head? I think you can get me to wear a different color t-shirt.
I am, I'll jump to Mr. Piper's head because he is a, you mentioned Bald for Bucks that took place Thursday, and we're going to talk about that in a minute, but I don't have a picture of Mr. Piper in my PowerPoint. But just so you know, he got up there with, I'll give a shout-out to his third-grade son, Riley, a Harris Hill student, and they both had their head shaved up on stage to help raise that $7,000. So it's very nice. I have a full head of hair, and I'm just worried that if I shave it, it's not going to grow back. So give me a little, give me a little bit of time. We do have a long, some reports today. So I'll do a student and staff honors, and then I'll turn it over to Dr. Sansucci to start our budgeting process. And tonight will be the 2015-16 Administrative Budget Proposal, as well as the 2015 Report on Fiscal Stress, Budget Forecast, and Reserves. We do have a brief overview of an easement request, both at the Penfield High School and another one at Harris Hill Elementary. And then we'll do a brief review of the Attorney General Review of Enrollment Policies to update the community. Our first student-staff honor is the Penfield First Tech Challenge, Team 6996, also known as Oncoming Storm. They won the Inspire Award at the regional competition in December, and this is the highest award given at the tournament. Penfield's challenge team includes 15 students in grades seven through nine and is coached by teachers Colleen Krug and Tim Gianotti, and they will now advance to the state tournament in February. So this is basically the robotics team at the middle school. So these are the folks that really head up this thing. Very proud. Talk about being very proud of our community and our students in our schools, as well as our staff. And in January every year, we traditionally talk about the holiday giving that took place in the month of December, ended November and all of December. And so just so you know, Penfield students, staff members, and families displayed many acts of generosity this holiday season. There's a list in the agenda. I'm not going to read through all of them because we'll be here all night, because when we made a call out to the buildings to please give us anything you did to, in terms of charity and fundraising, just what we asked for, we have over 35 different events that took place in the month of December to help support Penfield families and the greater Rochester community. I do want to highlight, though, just one from each school and each building. And so this one up here, I'll do that one first because there's a picture, and that is Scribner, and it is the Warm Clothing Drive. And they collected lots of warm clothing for School 33, which is their sister school in the Rochester City School District. We also have Penfield High School, the Ambassador's Club, and the PHS Secretaries sponsored their annual gift-giving project to help PHS families in need of assistance this holiday season. At Bay Trail, one of the many things they did was participate in a Adopt a Snowman project by collecting toys for children living in area shelters. At Cobble's, the first graders made inspirational ornaments and Kwanzaa posters for Galasano Children's Hospital, and they also went to Heathwood and Legacy Senior Living Centers to sing carols. I got a phone call just on that one from someone not connected to Penfield that was at the children's hospital and saw the large Kwanzaa posters that our first graders at Cobble's made, and they felt so moved that they called my office to just say it was really great to see because the Penfield-Cobble's name was on it. So it's really impacting that greater community. Harris Hill, the school contributed to a holiday project to benefit Sister School Number Seven in the city of Rochester. Items donated included gift cards, coats, snow pants, sweatpants, socks, underwear, and toys. Indian Landing, students and families donated socks and mittens to the mitten tree for the Open Door Mission. And as I mentioned, Scribner, the fourth grade, participated in a Adopt a Scarf project to benefit Sister School Number 33. And not to be undone, District Office jumped on the giving as well, much smaller group of people, but collected toiletries, hats, scarves, mittens, and other personal items for the Open Door Mission's shoebox gift program. So again, that's just a sample of our students and our staff coming together during the holiday season to give back to our community. And just if I could get, we got a lot of round of applause tonight, but just a round of applause for everybody, especially our students and staff. I don't have a picture of Mr. Piper, but I do have a picture of Dr. Maloney and some others who for Bald for Bucks, we've already had the student presentation, but just as a reminder, they raised over $7,000 during its Bald for Bucks campaign, and proceeds will benefit the Wilmont Cancer Center, Roswell Park Cancer Institute, and teens living with cancer. The one piece you need to know, if you're unaware, is all of this comes from the high school leadership class taught by Mr. Ted Braisner, and it is all the students who run this. They plan it, they organize it, they're the contact, they do it all. And what a great organization, all student-led. And so really great, and I do appreciate both Mr. Piper and his son Riley, who got up there and had their head shaved too for such a great, great cause. And if you want to see a picture of him getting his head shaved, you can follow me on Twitter, okay? So I did put that out. Last but not least, I don't have a slide for it, but I will. This just came in recently, and I want to just take a moment to announce that Ms. Lisa Chidley completed her required New York State fiscal training and got coverage for Focus on the Areas of Governance, Budget Planning, Fund Balance and Reserves, Financial Reports, and Auditor Function. So you'll be very well-vested for Dr. Sansucci's presentation tonight. So if you could pass this down, that just came in for you. And that is the end of my student and staff honors, and I'll turn it over to Dr. Sansucci for the first of many budget presentations. And I'll turn it over to Dr. Sansucci for the first of many budget presentations.
Thank you. Good evening. This is the first of many formal presentations of the components of the budget, but it's not really, as the board knows, the first budget presentation. So, you know, already this year, we've had a presentation of our audit by Ray Wagler, which is really a part of this budget process. It's how we did last year. We've looked at enrollments. And as you know, the board had a workshop and looked and seriously considered goals for the upcoming year. All of that's budget activity, all of that's important to this process. And that last thing that I mentioned, goals, we begin every one of our budget presentations with as we move throughout the process, throughout the year until we get to the vote, reminding ourselves that we have three prongs that our budget supports. Academic achievement and excellence partnerships throughout and without the district and a goal of fiscal responsibility. So, with that, tonight, we're beginning with the smallest portion of the budget, the administrative budget, which covers Board of Education activities. It covers the administration of the district, both at the central office and at the building level, and a few other miscellaneous pieces, including liability, insurance, tax refunds, and so on. It's about 6% of the total budget. You see here, the percentages as we move throughout the year along with the calendar. So, by the time we get to April 21st, we'll have looked at all the components of the budget and in some detail and we'll be ready to adopt. So, tonight, you can see proportion, in this slide, you can see proportionally the share of the budget. It's the blue slice, if you will, at the top, about 6%. And it's down 4 tenths of 1% in total. It's $5,770,000 in the proposal. There's a slight decrease, a modest decrease of $24,000 that turns into that 4 tenths of a percent. You have a lot of detail in your packet, including what's included in that, some backup documentation. But this slide, I think, tells the story. This breaks that $5 million, $6 million up into functions of the budget. So, the slide might be a little bit hard to see, I think, for folks at home. But furthest to the left, those barely visible bars are the Board of Education. You have some costs for conference, for supplies, and so on. The tallest bars in the middle of the budget are Building Administration. So, that's the budget for principals, for their staff, for the staff that supports students in the building. And you see across the bars, the relative proportions of all of them. Another way to look at this is by the object of the expenditure. So, this takes that same piece of the pie and slices it up a little bit different. Rather than where we spend it, which we now know is really in the buildings for Building Administration, it's how do we spend it? And here, the single greatest component, and this shouldn't be a surprise to any of us, is for salaries. We're people business, most of our budget goes in support of salaries, about 70% of it. And you see, that's true here as well. The equipment, you can't quite see on there, insurance and dues, postage, contractual items, materials and supplies, and transfer to school lunch. I want to pause for a moment and just explain that. As part of the administrative budget, the board supports the school lunch program. For many years, our commitment has been that the board would support the salary of the director and also the costs of employees' retirement for that program. So, other than that, the school lunch program's expected to stand on its own. Their revenues have to support their program. So, the money that they receive for sales of lunches has to support the salaries of all the folks, it has to pay for the food that they buy. It's really a separate enterprise within our school, with this exception. The board's made that commitment that the leadership of that program and the retirement cost for that program would be borne by the general fund. So, you see that displayed here. Salaries for certified folks are down slightly. That's because of some significant changes within it. We've had some retirements and resignation. There's not a decrease in the number of people, but rather, we've had folks leave for other jobs. Their replacements are at a lower cost and we're budgeting for some retirements. Also, their replacements will be presumably lower. There is a reduction of FTE contained in this budget. 1.0 High School Receptionist was eliminated during this year and is not anticipated to be replaced. And you'll see, you also get a, part of your budget is an FTE report. There's a slight reduction in FTE of 4 tenths. We're moving, it's not a reduction in this case, the 1.0 Receptionist is a reduction, it's an elimination of a position. But these 4 tenths of administrative assistance really is a reflection in the budget of a reality. And that's, we're moving 1.1 of each of the administrative assistants at the elementary schools to the transportation budget. So, 10% of their budget, of their salary, rather, will be reflected in the transportation budget. You'll see that when we get there in a couple of board meetings. But the reason for that is, and it's supported by their job descriptions, clearly, one of their functions is they're on the front line in sorting out of transportation. They're the folks we see at the bus loop, they're the folks on the radio helping locate lost mittens and making sure that kids get on the right bus. That function is a transportation function. And by reflecting it in that portion of the budget, we'll get transportation aid on that portion of their salaries. So, we want to maximize our state aid where we can. And this is a legitimate and probably overdue reflection of that portion of their role. So, we're going to make that change. Shows us a reduction here, but it'll show us a slight increase in another budget. This is the board budget calendar. As you can see, tonight, we're looking at the administrative budget. At our next meeting, we'll be looking at special instructional programs. That's staff development, special education, the counselors, nurses, and so forth. Tentatively scheduled is a board budget workshop on February 7th. That's tentative and I think might change based on schedule, but somewhere in that February timeframe, we'll be looking at that workshop. I just mentioned the Capitol presentation. General instructional budgets will be looked at on March 3rd. We'll have a conversation on education, talking about budget issues on March 10th. Another follow-up work session for the board, tentatively scheduled on the 14th. Both these programs. And by the time we get to the April 7th board meeting, we need to have all the components in place. We'll look at that meeting at benefits, at revenue, at uses of fund balance, because we'll need to take a look at a complete budget in order to adopt at the subsequent meeting on the 21st. Our hearings on the 5th and the vote, which I always remind folks of, is on May 19th here at the high school. Tonight, I have a further presentation on some budget forecasts, fiscal stress, and so on. But before I leave, the administrative component of the budget, are there any questions that I could address?
Thank you, Mark. Board members, any questions or comments?
Thank you.
Thank you. The next portion of tonight's presentation has to do with a look, sort of both backwards and forwards, and also a discussion of where we're at in terms of our projected future and also of reserves. So, it begins with a presentation on fiscal stress. This, we have been looking at for the last two years because the Comptroller of the state of New York has introduced a fiscal stress monitoring system that's intended to assist schools in determining where they're at along that continuum. And, you know, fiscal stress really is a continuum. It's, there's no such thing as really not fiscal stress or complete fiscal stress. It's really a continuum of where you're at in your process. So, we want to, we want to take a look at that and pay attention to it. It can mean different things. So, there are different ways to measure fiscal stress. And I've given you some examples here. So, you can, you can examine cash solvency, meaning, do you have enough money to pay your bills? It's a very simple question. Budget solvency, a more mechanical way, do your revenues equal your expenditures? Clearly, if they don't, or if they're changing over time, that might be an indication of stress. Over the long run, budget solvency and cash solvency are frozen moments in time. Right now, how does that look? Long-run solvency attempts to look at that in the future. And service-level solvency is, can you continue to provide the level of, and quality of services required? I think that's really, in terms of our concern, the level of solvency or of fiscal stress that we care about. Over the, over the long term, can we continue to provide to our taxpayers, to our, to our parents and to our families what the level of service and the quality of instructional program that they want? The comptroller system doesn't look at that. Rather, it's designed, and for good reason, they, to get at a long-run fiscal solvency conversation, it really requires more data than they have. It requires more time, you have to be here to do it. There's lots of complicated questions that have to be asked. And there's really no way for them to do that for over 600 school districts. So, their system looks at, at two different sets of variables. They look at some environmental indicators and they look at financial indicators. Last year, when we did this, we didn't have a lot of data on how that was going to play out. We knew what the measurements would be and we could apply our data against it. This year, we know a little bit more. So, I want to talk a little bit about these because I think they're instructive about where we're at and about what that solvency kind of means. So, I'll begin with the environmental indicators. Change in property values, change in enrollment, budget defeats, budget approval percentage, our graduation rate, and free and reduced lunch. And I've graphed each of them against where we're at in the county. I apologize for the smallness of this, but I wanted to get a couple of slides on each, on each graph. So, change in property value is a measure of stress. If your property values are shrinking or declining, clearly, that could lead to stress. Where the red bar, the red lines, the county average, you can see where we're at. We are right at about the county average in terms of change in property value. In terms of change in enrollment, all those bars are decreases, with the exception of one tiny increase to the furthest left. Across the county, enrollments have been declining. And ours have been declining as well. This board knows that well. But at a rate that's less than many of our peers. That would be an indication of fiscal stress for us. But compared to our peers across the county, maybe not as much, right? Enrollments have decreased for others at a greater rate. Change in budget approval percentage, again, an environmental indicator of fiscal stress. You see, some districts have had great increases. This is from 11 to 14, so it's a three-year average. Some districts have had great increases in their budget approval percentages, some have had great decreases. We're right at about the median. Ours hasn't really changed that much over the course of those three years. Our graduation rate, again, this is that environmental scan, how is the, how is the system doing? They chose to measure graduation rate, lots to get at the instructional program presumably, lots of ways you could measure that and probably better ways. But that's an easy number for them to get, and we're third in the county. Again, a lower graduation rate, an indicator of fiscal stress. So, not so bad, really, in terms of the environmental scan. Oops, forgot, free and reduced lunch, I apologize. So, here we are, again, stacked up against our peers for free and reduced lunch. Our free and reduced lunch population's been growing. We know that over the course of the last several years. It's been growing for us fairly dramatically, but also, it's fairly low compared to the other schools in the county. So, now, we'll look at the environmental indicators quickly, or I'm sorry, the financial indicators quickly. You'll see that the short-term debt and short-term debt trend is crossed out. Those are looked at by the comptroller, but we don't issue short-term debt. That would be borrowings in anticipation of getting your taxes or your state aid. It could be an indicator that you don't have enough cash on hand. We don't do it in other county, and in Monroe County, no one else does either, so it's not relevant for this discussion. Unassigned fund balance as a percentage of expenditure. So, this is how much do you hold as assigned, unassigned fund balance against your total expenditures. The less you hold, the greater your fiscal stress. You can see where we stand up. We're a little bit below the average. Total fund balance includes reserves. So, that's the distinction there. So, your total fund balances divided by expenditures expressed as a percentage, the more presumably that you have in fund balance as compared to your expenditures, the more stable you could be expected to be, and it would be an indicator of less fiscal stress. So, in this chart, the more fiscal stress you're under, the further you are to the right. And you can see, we're in the middle, slightly below, slightly below the county average. So, indicating that many school districts in the county are holding more in reserves or fund balance. Operating surplus or deficit, how are you doing in your budget? So, as your budget produces in any year, do you, do you spend more or less? Do you run in a deficit on your operating surplus or do you run a positive budget? You see, we've run fairly conservative budgets over time and we have, in comparison to others, we're a little bit more to the left, to the fiscally, to the not-stress side, I guess is one way to say it. Cash and short-term investments over current liabilities. So, how much cash do you have on hand to pay your liabilities? Again, you can see where we're at compared to others. In this, again, further to the right is an indicator of greater stress, further to the left, not. And finally, cash as a percentage of monthly expenditures, the same analysis. So, you can see, I think it's, we're projected to be, they've not released the 15, the 2014, I should say, fiscal stress indicators, they will in the near future. I just received an invitation to attend a meeting where they'll discuss how it works, a webinar, I should say. But we anticipate it, we've done the math, we know what our data is, we know how they analyze it. Last year, we were shown no stress, zero. We expect that to continue. You can see how we, how we line up against our peers in that regard. But again, that's the comptroller's fiscal stress analysis. And his, their, their analysis is that frozen moment in time. It's akin to the cash-level solvency analysis. It doesn't look, he can't, at what are you going to do in the future? That service-level solvency that we talked about is what we care about. So, every year, we try and take a look at how we're doing for that. And we take a look based on what we anticipate in terms of operating surpluses and deficits and our trend in revenue expenditures over time. I got, you have more detail on this in your package, but essentially, the question is, when do our lines cross? We, we work in an environment now of tax cap. We work in an environment of, for many years, of reduced state aid. So, where, how are we doing? And as you can see, we anticipate that those lines would cross, that we would be in, in an operating deficit now in, if this model is true, in 1920, 2019, 20. That's further out than it was just a couple of years ago. One of the reasons for that is the reduction in employees' retirement system and teachers' retirement system. Those are, we projected those to go up. They've gone up very dramatically for a number of years. I think they've dropped, they'll probably, you know, it's anyone's guess where they go. I anticipate them to go back up. They're currently below their long-term averages. But that, but cooking that in, if you will, pushes that, that negative future out further into the future. So, that's a good thing for us. But the trends, I think, ultimately work against us. The tax cap is designed to be, and this assumes that we stay within the tax cap over the course of time. The tax cap's designed to be, the way the formula works is the lesser of inflation, the lesser of 2% or inflation. So, if inflation runs at 4%, the calculation will use 2. If inflation runs at 1.7%, we'll use 1.7%. So, it's designed over time to always be So it's designed over time to always be below the rate of inflation. So over time, as our costs go up, as salaries go up, as the cost of goods go up, over time, it's designed to restrict resources. And that's really the story of that model. That's what that shows. So over time, we will use reserves. We have reserves. You saw on the fiscal stress, the comptroller's fiscal stress report, that total fund balance slide, that we're about in the middle countywide with regard to that. And the comptroller generally is supportive of them. So we have several pages. I won't go through this. But in your report, there's some discussion of our district philosophy and the standards that districts are held to with regard to the use of those reserves. Essentially, you want to be prudent. You want to have reserves at appropriate levels. Those are funded. Those reserves have been funded. And we'll see some future slides on, based on budget surpluses at year-end. You see, you saw in our slides that that's projected to decrease and to fall off as we move throughout the course of the years. But in the meantime, we've used them to make appropriate choices around reserving. As a result of that, we've, I want to pause for a moment and just read this quote from Moody's. When we borrow, when we've borrowed around borrowings, one of the first things that the market does is analyze our fiscal condition because they want to be able to make assurances to the bond market about our ability to repay. Moody's gives us a bond rating. Ours is A3, which is very strong. They increased it to that in 2009. And at that point, their quote was, the quote from their press release, was the upgrade to AA3 reflects management's conservative budgeting practices, which have resulted in a healthy reserve position and strong liquidity. This high-quality rating reflects a trend of, a continued trend of strong financial performance. So we've been doing okay. The question is, are we doing the right things around the reserves? So in your packet, and they're just briefly summarized here, are the reserve, is an inventory of our reserves, what we have, what the definition of they are for, and some legal information as to what they're established for, how they're funded, and so on. We hold a reserve for bus purchase that we've been using for a number of years to pay for our buses. We have a capital reserve that we've used for construction projects, an insurance reserve that we use for payment of uninsured claims, an unemployment insurance reserve that's really very small that we use to, that we can use to stabilize in times of layoff or increased unemployment. Last year, we created a workers' compensation reserve based on the shortfall in the county's workers' compensation in the program. A tax sursuri reserve is established for outstanding tax sursuri cases. So these are claims against the district. When entities win a tax reduction claim and were required to pay tax, pay back those amounts, it comes from that reserve. Employee accrued benefits liability is a smallish reserve, you'll see in a moment, that's used to pay post-employment benefits for certain units, and a reserve for employee retirement contributions. This next slide, I'll get to the pie that shows the total in a moment, but the next couple of slides show the activity in and out of those reserves over the course of the last year. So the beginning column is the audited balances in the reserves I just mentioned. We began with $24 million. We earned interest of $27,000. We had disbursements out of those reserves of $5 million, 5.2 million. We were able to refund reserves at year-end of 3.2 million. So the net effect is a reduction in reserves from 24 to 22 million dollars over the course of the last year. We also hold a debt service fund, which is mandated to be used for the payment of debt. We have 5.2 million there. And we're just now beginning, as we close our capital projects, the big capital project is still being closed, we'll begin to spend that down against payment of debt over the course of the next several years. And of course, fund balances, assigned and unassigned, the 3.4 million is our unassigned fund balance, if you will, the rainy day fund. And appropriated is what we've used for reduction of taxes over the course of the last year. This is what that looks like a little more graphically. I think it tells the tale a little bit better. So you can see the large slices of the pie to the left, the bus purchase reserve and the capital reserve really, as well as the debt service fund are the lion's share of our funding. The next largest would be the retirement contribution reserve. And here is the funding over the course since '03, '04 of where that, where those reserve funding levels have come from. The red bar is our actual revenues for the course of the year. The green bar is net expenditures, including capital project expenditures. And the blue lines are budget. So as you can see, that it's those changes from year to year that have allowed us, when appropriate, to fund the reserves. Also in your packet is some information on the current level of reserves, the reserve status, and a recommendation as to what we should do as we move forward. I'm not going to go through that in detail. It's in your packet, other than to point out some of the more significant ones. So our tax sursuri reserve, we were not funded at 100% last year. I think it was about 80% of outstanding cases, something like that. But we unexpectedly have, just in the last several months, had two very significant cases discontinued. So Wegmans had brought a tax sursuri case that we had reserved against. And Aaron Manor had brought a tax sursuri case. Both of those have been discontinued, just dropped. So that means we had reserved against them, which means that now we are over-reserved in the tax sursuri reserve. So we'll need to begin to return that money to the general fund. The proposal, and we can look at this in greater detail as we move through the budget process, but the requirement is that it be returned within four years. So as a starting place, I'm anticipating returning at least $81,000 as a revenue towards this year's budget to reduce taxes. So $81,000 will go to reduce taxes. We'll do that and reevaluate this as we go along for each of the next four years. If necessary, we can accelerate that. But that's the starting spot, I think, for our plan and for our conversation.
How long do those cases go on for? Because it looked like in the report that there was like years and years of people.
Yeah. It's very interesting, isn't it? A, and the, these are large commercial entities that would file these cases. So the smaller claims, a household, for example, you go to, like if I were, wanted to protest my taxes, I go to Grievance Day. There's a process. That is not what we're talking about here. What we're talking about are industries, businesses that want, that want to have their taxes reduced. An Aaron Manor, a Grand V, those kinds of places. And in your reports, a spreadsheet of the outstanding cases. And what you pointed out is that very often, there's multiple years. I'd always been a little puzzled over that. They would file, what you typically see is a tax sursuri case filed, and then nothing happened, and then filed again the next year, and then nothing happened, and then filed again the third year. And I always wondered why the process took so long. The answer is that in the statute, in the law, you can only in a tax sursuri case go back five years. So if you're going to pay attorney's fees and court fees, and if you're going to do depositions, you want to get the maximum amount of bang for your attorney dollar. So you want to pile up five years' worth of cases and get them all at once. And so there's a tendency to file, 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 nothing happens. And then in the fourth year, you begin to see activity. So we have typically, by the time these are brought to trial, we've got four years at risk. And that's why you see that happen. Which is why when Wegmans filed, I anticipated we were going to see, you know, four years' worth of very significant amounts. And then, and then a finding. But after one year, they elected to drop the case and move away. Very often, that means that their appraisal didn't support their position. Let's see. So on this slide, I have the two capital reserves, bus purchase reserve and the capital reserve. There's two things I'd point out about this. We've used the capital reserve based on our five-year capital plan. That's, we're done with the last one, and the new one right now is in process. So that will guide, that building condition survey and five-year plan will be guiding that capital work. Bus purchase reserve, we've been using as we move along. The one thing that will be a slight change in this year is we will be using $300,000 from the reserve. Prior purchases, we transferred the budgeted amount. And where there were savings against the contract cost of the bus, that money's accumulated in the capital fund, so we'll use that again against the purchase. And according to our plan, $160,000 from the general fund. So the idea here is that over time, as we deplete our reserves, we build the cost of the buses back into the general fund. So that $160,000 per that plan. So that'll continue. The only difference in this year is that we'll use the accumulated savings from prior transfers to fund the buses. On this slide, the, probably the thing I would point out here is we need to begin more aggressive use, I think, as we move forward on the debt service fund. So we'll be, we've been holding a portion of that money in anticipation of the closure of the big capital project. We're all but done with that. And so over the course of the next several years, we'll begin to spend down that debt service fund. So that, I think, we'll need to begin within this next budget. We'll be moving forward with that. And insurance reserve, the one, well, we'll be taking a look at that as we move forward in the health consortium. We may be considering some changes there. So we'll need to reevaluate the appropriateness and the levels of funding there as we, as we make those changes. And workers' compensation, we had lots of conversation just a couple, seems like just a couple of board meetings ago. As you know, the county workers' compensation consortium reevaluated their outstanding cases, their outstanding liabilities. And as a result of that, as recognizing a deficit, we wanted to recognize our share of that deficit in reserve. So established this as of last June, Mayor June. So that'll, we'll continue to monitor that as we move forward. And I'll be bringing you some reports as we, as we take a look at what those deficit balances are on a go-forward basis. You have lots more detail. You have a pretty comprehensive report. I just wanted to summarize it here. This PowerPoint's part of that report. So in addition to the report and a copy of the PowerPoint, you have some backup documentation. All of that'll be posted to the web. We, every year, put it on the website for folks that have further questions. But are there any, is there anything I didn't go over that you would like to understand better?
Thank you, Mark. Board members, questions or comments? Camille?
I have a question. In the past, I think we've saved, been able to save tens of thousands, if not hundreds of thousands of dollars by retiring some debt early. Is that what you're talking about? Is that just different language? Or is that different?
No. We'll, we would use the debt service, we will be using the debt service reserve to offset, we'll just be essentially using part of that reserve to pay our debt. We have saved money by prepaying debt. But right now, and I honestly would recommend we take a look at that again, but all of our outstanding debt is not callable. So one of the, in order for you to prepay those bonds, you need to be, bonds, you need to be able to call them. And there's a timeframe, the market wants to know when you issue a bond, whether they're going to be called or not. Because what they'll pay for them depends on that. All of our outstanding bonds right now are not callable. They'll have to get closer to their end of life over the next, it'll probably be 10 years before we have that conversation again.
Okay. Thanks. Any additional questions or comments? Catherine?
With the bus reserve being, is that kind of being absorbed by the general fund as we go along?
Yeah, there's a, I didn't put the graph in. You'll see it during our capital fund presentation. I'll have a graph on it. But essentially, when we established the reserve, that was during the time of, when there were, the state government was making significant budget, state aid reductions. What we decided to do at that time was to fund all of our buses out of the reserve. So, but we knew that that's not a sustainable model, that when the reserve's gone, now what do you do? So we established a plan where we would begin, in the hopes of better time to come, better times to come, we would begin by paying for all of our buses out of the reserve and then gradually decrease that amount while every year, we built in a slightly larger increase. We'd buy out of both. You know, some of the money would come from the general fund, some from the reserve. And as the amount in the reserve decreases over time, the amount that we spend from the general fund would increase so that there's no cliff at the end. We would, by the time we get done with the reserve, by the time the reserve is depleted, we would have enough built into our general fund to be able to continue with our bus replacement schedule.
Okay. So then if we were to have the kind of fiscal situation that brought about the concern to create the bus reserve?
Right.
If we see that coming again, do you?
We could go backwards. We could, you know, you could make the determination that we're going to reevaluate that plan. And we could reduce the amount out of the general fund, increase the amount out of the reserve. You've created another unsustainable problem. But it could allow you to.
Weather the storm, so to speak.
Yeah, sure. Exactly.
Okay. All right, great. Thank you.
Additional questions or comments? Thank you, Mark. I appreciate that this is going to be on the website for our public. Do you get questions in regards to the documents?
Occasionally, yeah.
Do?
Yeah.
Okay. I would just be curious, what type of questions do you get?
Well, honestly, I get it off, the most questions, I think, about bus purchase, more than anything else, I would say, through the years. Not kept track, but I think that's probably folks, I'm not sure why, but I think that's the thing that draws people's attention the most. It's, you know, it's certainly, it's one of our most visible, you know, they're out there every day, and they're big and yellow, and they're sort of hard to miss. So I think that's the component of that.
And perhaps because also they're part of the vote, everything?
Yeah, that, true. That true.
Now, and you'll have the big thick packet we got. That will be online and also the PowerPoint.
Yes.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
The last piece of my presentation tonight, there's two easement requests on the agenda later on. I just wanted to speak to them briefly before we get there. So there is an easement request from the county of Monroe at the high school. So this has to do with the traffic light at High School Drive and Five Mile Line Road. That traffic light, oddly enough, is ours. It is a private, considered a private light. And this, this issue has gone on for a number of years. They consider, as far as Monroe County's concerned, that light exists, and it's fair, I think, that that light exists because of the high school. So it was installed in 19, whatever, '54, I think, and has existed there ever since. At one point, the county realized that they did not have in place any of the paperwork that would normally associate with a private, a private traffic signal. So they, over time, have transferred to us the cost of maintenance of the traffic signal, and we pay for the electricity for that traffic signal. The final outstanding piece of that is they would require. The final outstanding piece of that is they would request, the county has requested, an easement to enter our property to be able to maintain the signal. In the future, if there are, if it needs to be replaced, if there's work that needs to be done, we'll bear the cost of that. But the county would like to, has requested an easement to be able to, to maintain it. It's reasonable. Our attorneys looked at it. If we were to build the high school today and went to the county, they would say, fine, it's going to be your light, here's the easement documentation, you're going to have to do this before we'll proceed. We're doing it in reverse, but it's pretty much the standard, so I recommend approval of that. The, at Harris Hill, along the boundary of Harris Hill and the, and 441, there's a sewer line, a sewer line and a storm sewer line. The town, reviewing their paperwork, does not have an easement to address that. So they request that we approve an easement for them to enter our property to, to be able to maintain that sanitary and storm sewer. Again, there's no reason not to grant that. We've done so in, in other cases. So I'd recommend approval of that as well.
All right. Thank you, Mark. Board members, any questions or comments? Catherine?
Mark, I'm having a little trouble differentiating what, when the county, for the traffic light, the county wants to maintain it, but we pay for it, so what's maintaining? What, what does that mean?
We pay a, a maintenance fee to them to maintain it.
Okay. So they, like, any repairs and whatnot?
Light bulbs, that kind of stuff. Yeah.
And then we just pay the bill?
Correct.
Okay. That's all there is really to that easement?
Uh, yes.
Is that what that means?
There's, there's, there, there's, the poles are located on our property, so to get to them, they need to enter our property. There's the, the wires under the road, the-
Yeah, I get it.
Signal, all of that stuff. So they need to be able to access our property to be able to work on the signal.
I get it. Thank you.
Mark, I think it's important to point out that we cannot control the light, you know, at big traffic times.
You know, thank you. Yes. Well, you know, that's a fine point, and you are not the first person to say that to me. And thank you for reminding me and allowing me the chance to say that while we pay for the electricity of the light, while we now apparently will be responsible for repairs to the light, and while we are granting an easement for the maintenance of the light, we do not control how long it's on or off. That is up to the county and to the Department of Transportation. So, thank you.
You know, we've always talked about the, I'm sorry.
Mark?
We've always talked about the sign, the school sign up front, and we said we can't have one because there's no electricity available except for the street, the, the street lights. So since we own this, and I know we can't control the lights in terms of the scat, the timing, all, but why can't we tap into that then to power our school sign?
I don't know. We could look into it.
Thank you, Mark. Barb?
Since we own the light, and when it says stop, can we say, go Patriots?
I'm sure-
Put an eagle.
I'm sure the Department of Transportation would have some input on that.
We own the light. Can we paint it red?
Any additional questions or comments? Thank you, Mark.
Back to me for our, our wrap-up here of the superintendent report. And this is, one other thing the board will be voting on is a ability for me to sign a contract. So I just want to give, give some updates to both the board and the community. And that is that in December 2014, the district was informed by the New York State Office of the Attorney General and the New York State Education Department that some questions on our enrollment materials could potentially, and this is their language, chill or discourage undocumented students from registering in the district. I want to make sure we're very clear with the community that the district has never had a complaint about its registration process and has always welcomed all district residents who wish to register their children for school. A little background here with, from the Attorney General's office is that Penfield is one of approximately 160 New York State school districts contacted by the Office of the Attorney General, working in conjunction with New York State Education Department regarding this matter. The specific concern noted was a question on our enrollment form, which inquired about a student's United States citizenship. And so we were not allowed to ask that, just so you're aware from the community angle, is that this really started with a couple of districts in Long Island. Probably seen in the news, especially more recently across the nation, but in New York as well, we have had a large numbers of undocumented youth, immigrant students in certain school districts where it really impacts the school district. We're not one of those school districts. So this case where they started looking, the Office of the Attorney General really looking at a couple of downstate districts, then led to a review starting in about October of all districts in New York State. And where they pulled our registration documents from was online, because we have so much information online. So if none of that information was online, our registration packets, we probably wouldn't have gotten a letter from the Attorney General's office. But obviously, we're transparent and open with everything we do. As soon as we got those letters, we began working on this process to make sure that everything was legal and fair. And the district's been working closely with the Attorney General's office, as well as New York State Education, to ensure that all appropriate revisions are made. The board will be voting tonight on a resolution to allow the acting superintendent to sign an agreement with the Office of the Attorney General and take all necessary steps to ensure compliance with the agreement. We've already started the process of making sure that we're compliant with everything. We're upfront and transparent. And although the board gives me a lot of responsibilities, signing a official contract with the Office of Attorney General is not one of those. So you, I need a resolution so I can sign off. I just wanted to, you know, thank publicly to both Dr. Sansucci and Jim Pfeiffer for all the work that really has gone in here. The area of registration enrollment falls under the Assistant Superintendent for Instruction. And Jim and his staff have been just on top of all of this in terms of making changes. You know, we publicly have absolutely done nothing purposely to avoid any students who live in Penfield and happen to be immigrant or undocumented students. Penfield opens its doors to any resident that lives within the boundary of our school district to come to school. You know, Mark mentioned our, Mark mentioned our declining enrollment, slight declining enrollment. We, we want everybody we can get. So we're going to make all these changes and make it right. So I appreciate both Dr. Sansucci and Mr. Pfeiffer for all the help and support on making these changes very, very quickly. That's it.
Thank you. Any questions or comments about this? All right. Yes, Lisa?
Is that typical practice that you have to sign a contract with the Attorney General to say we're going to, I mean, that just seems strange.
Yeah, working with the Office of the Attorney General has been very interesting. So it's, it's typically not an organization that works with, with school districts. They are, and can do, this really is a legal matter around some district who, in the Office of Attorney General's point of view and perspective, because it's pending, pending lawsuits, is that they're concerned that districts are purposely trying to stop undocumented students from coming into their school district. So I think it's, I don't know, I'd look to Dr. Sansucci with the history on how many times superintendents have had to sign an agreement with the Office of the Attorney General.
This would be the first.
So it is, it, welcome to Penfield, huh? So, you know, so that's where we are now. I will say, though, that working with the, working with the Office of Attorney General, they, they have been supportive. It's, you know, we do have, the, the contract we're signing is that we are going to have all of our registration materials reviewed. We will have a training session for the people who have hands-on with the registration process, and that we will provide data in regards to any student that we turn away for immigrate, immigrant status. You know, I foresee that answer being zero. You know, in the times of Mr. Pfeiffer's year and a half in the district, I think you share, we had one student we turned away, and the reason we turned them away is because they didn't live within the boundary of Penfield Central School District. It had nothing to do with their immigration status. The interesting piece, just for fun, is that with New York State Education and our SL services, we do need to ask many questions. The question is, we just can't ask them ahead of time. We can ask them after they've been enrolled, but prior to them starting school. So that's really the chilling effect, they said, that is a potential that could chill a student, that if online our document says, what's your U.S. citizenship? Are you a U.S. citizen, yes or no? An undocumented family or student might say, well, I'm not going to even go in and try to register. So we're going to clean everything up and, and move forward.
John?
Is it a consent decree, basically? Is that what they called it?
The-
The document?
The document that we're signing, it is a, the name of it is a, it's an agreement. It's a, yeah, it's an agreement to, discontinuance agreement, that we're basically going to discontinue our current practice and then make the change.
Okay. Thanks.
Mark?
And you, you mentioned that they're going to review our, our new forms. Are we making an agreement that we're basically going to meet their, their, obviously, the requirements? Are we making an agreement to allow them the ability to review and approve all future versions of that form? Or is this just like a one-time to make sure we're compliant?
Great question. It is a three-year agreement. So anytime we, but we have worked with them back and forth, so we didn't sign the, we didn't, we're not planning on signing the first agreement that came forward. So we did work to make sure that it was fair on both sides. And the agreement now is that we will have them review all of our registration enrollment paperwork. And then anytime we make a change around the questions dealing with immigration status, we will have them review it again. So if we put it on a different letterhead, it doesn't need to get reviewed. But any question that may change around the immigrant status, we'll have them review again, just for a three-year period.
So the scope of the, the scope of their authority is just that question?
Just, any question that deals with immigration. So that question and any other question that could look at as a similar sense.
Barb?
So hearing you say what you just said about the first document, does that mean that we incorporated using our legal services, our-
Yeah.
Okay.
It's a great question.
So it wasn't just-
I, I-
General talking.
Yes, I agree. I have a lot of, a lot of onus on, on both Mark and Jim and myself. I, I do think we're, we're bright individuals, but we went to our district attorneys for this, for their review, and they've been very helpful and supportive as well. We're not the only district in the area who's dealing with this. And so there are, there are other local districts who are in the same spot we are. And then, again, it's about 160 districts across the state who are working with the Attorney General's office and the New York State Education Department. So.
Catherine?
So when you say you're in a three-year agreement, does that mean you create the documentation, they approve it, and that's fine for three years unless you change it? Or is it that every time somebody enrolls, they check, it's not that?
No. So the, the agreement that I, we can, once signed, you know, well, I can share with the board as well specifically, so you can take a look. But ultimately, the, the big piece is that we have to have our registration documents reviewed after we've made the changes.
Okay.
I will let you know that we've already had, done that tentatively, because we got this letter right around the time we were ready to send out our kindergarten registration packets. So any family, community members who have a kindergarten may have noticed that they came later than they ever have, because the Attorney General's, the Attorney, Office of the Attorney General reviewed that unofficially and, and informally to make sure that we had those changes for the kindergarten registration packet. We didn't need to do that, but we are working with them and said, why not? Let's, that's a big push for registration. So we're pretty confident that the changes we've already made, once submitted, after we sign off on the paperwork, are going to come back with the thumbs up, green light sign. We also have to have training. And so we've already worked with our, with one of the attorneys we work with, who their firm had created some training, because again, this isn't just one district, but many. So everybody has to have some sort of training. And so we have a, a formal training that Jim's staff around registration is going to be, having to be trained every year. It has to be a live training, which is very interesting. It can't be a online training. It has to be a live training.
Every year?
Yep. Just some, some hoops to jump through, but all in the good name of making sure that we are not chilling any undocumented immigrant status student from Penfield. So we'll do what's best for kids, that's what our focus is, and, and we'll make the changes. But I'll go back to, just again, for the community, as we talk about this, is that bold bullet there is that we've never had a complaint about our registration process, and we've always welcomed all district students. But again, they reviewed all online materials, deemed that some of our questions, they felt, gave a chilling effect. And so we get thrown in with everybody, and we'll do what we need to do to, to fix it. Yep.
All right. Any additional questions or comments? All right. Thank you, Dr. Potvin. All right. Board members, we are on to board business. We are on page five of your agenda. And we have a series of change orders regarding the Skribner Entrance Bay Trail Transformer Project, the Skribner Roof Bay Trail Gym renovation, and also the Indian Landing Emergency Sewer Project. Those change orders go from page five to page nine of your agenda. They have been reviewed by and are supported by Architect Victor Maselli, Project Manager Gary Hoffman, Clerk of the Works Alan McNiff, and Assistant Superintendent for Business Mark Sansucci. May I have a motion, please, that those change orders, as described in your agenda, be approved? So moved. Questions or comments? Thank you, all those in favor. Seven in favor, none opposed. Town of Penfield requests for easement. The Town of Penfield has requested a 30-feet-wide permanent easement along the southern property line of Harris Hill Elementary School. The easement follows the southern property line running east-west between from Harris Waylon Park Road and Hillrise Drive. The proposed easement is intended to allow Town of Penfield to maintain the existing sanitary sewer and storm water sewer without impacting our use of the property. The documents have been reviewed by the school attorney and have been approved relative to their legality. The school district has granted similar easements in the past. Accordingly, it is recommended the following resolution be approved. So may I have a motion, please, that the Board of Education authorizes the superintendent of schools to grant a utility easement to the Town of Penfield for the maintenance of the storm and sanitary utilities? Questions or comments? Thank you, all those in favor. Seven in favor, none opposed. Thank you. Monroe County DOD requests for easement. The Monroe County Department of Transportation considers the traffic light at Five Mile Line Road and High School Drive to be a private traffic signal. Private traffic signals provide access at the owner's request to a private property and do not service a public side street. High School Drive is school property and has not been dedicated to the town. The school has been paying for electricity and for annual maintenance of the traffic signal since 2002. County is also requesting an easement to service the portions of the equipment located on school property. The school will be responsible for any necessary future upgrades to the equipment. The school attorney has reviewed the documentation. The easement documentation is in order. So at this time, may I have a motion, please, that the Board of Education authorizes the superintendent of schools to grant a permanent easement to the County of Monroe for the purpose of traffic signal installation, operation, and maintenance at High School Drive? Questions or comments? Thank you, all those in favor. Seven in favor, none opposed. Thank you. Financial items. Approval of construction bids, athletics, and field lighting project. On Tuesday, November 18th, at 1:00 p.m., bids were received for a contract for the abatement of the mercury-containing rubber floor in the East Gym. The district had several bids that were, that were received, and at this time, they are all listed in your agenda. At this time, the construction manager has reviewed the bid submittals and recommends approval of the low bidder, Genesee Environmental. So may I have a motion, please, that construction contracts be awarded as set forth above? So moved. Questions or comments? Thank you, all those in favor. Seven in favor, none opposed. Thank you. Donations and book fair proceeds. Book fair proceeds totaling $7,845 for items in the 2014-15 budget have been granted to the district's schools, shown in your agenda, Cobles Elementary, Harris Hill Elementary, Skribner Elementary, and Bay Trail Middle School. May I have a motion, please, that the Board of Education approve an amendment totaling $7,845 to the 2014-15 budget, as shown above? The amount submitted both as revenue and expenditure items, and expresses gratitude to all Penfield parents, students, and staff for their support of this year's book fairs. Questions or comments? Thank you, all those in favor. Seven in favor, none opposed. Policy review. So we have several policies that are here for first reading, and several policies here that are for second reading and approval. Camille, can you take us through this, please?
The first policy that's on the list, 7665, is actually one that we would recommend that we rescind, because the language that is now in 7640, which is up for a second read tonight, the policy and regulations and- read tonight, the policy and regulations in 7665 are covered by 7640, which we'll probably be approving either tonight or in the future. So that one, we recommend we rescind, because it would be redundant. 7670 is another one of the policies related to special education in the district that have been under review by Gwenda Buckman, and she's gone through tens of these policies, many of which were adopted in 2002, and there have been changes to regulations and things, so she's been updating them. 7670 is a good example of a policy, in general, as we've done our policy manual review, what we've tried to do is separate regulation from policy and also to make sure that our policy doesn't just restate the law. So she actually had some language that I thought was interesting, but you all know that I think policy is the most interesting part of the agenda, so save the best for last, pretty much. But the changes in this policy significantly reduce the length of this policy, eliminate redundancies and references to actions or matters beyond the scope of the policy, per se. The provisions that were removed are governed by statute and regulation. Their exclusion from the policy is not the result of a change in law, but they do reflect a belief that policy serves a purpose separate from law or administrative regulations. So the policy was revised to aid us in crafting a policy that directly and concisely addresses issues over which the district has control or discretion. The reason I wanted to point that out is because I think Lisa had a question about to what extent we, you know, talk about the regulation or restate the law in the policy. So the district created administrative regulations to more fully outline our practices according to the law. So that's why 7670 definitely had some more changes than we're used to seeing. 7690, also up for a first read, has some more minor revisions, but also we added a reference to some other policies and to the actual law. Those are the only three that are part of the review of the special education policies. Next policy, up for first read tonight, is 3210, Visitors to the School. And the reason that this one...it's an existing policy, but it was very short. The underlying language is actually the existing language. So what you see above it is all new, because, as you've probably been hearing about at some of the board meetings, or if you've been to any parent meetings, the district is going to have a new visitor management...an electronic visitor management system where you'll be scanned and they'll check, do a computer check...what's the...well, a check against the national sex offender database, and then you'll get a temporary passport. If you ever visited some other school districts or BOCs, you've gotten that kind of thing. So this policy now addresses what it...the reality of what it's going to be like to visit any of our buildings. You'll notice that we...the language about board members visiting the schools is crossed out, and that's because any visitor to the school, whether it's a parent, a vendor, a contractor, a board member, any visitor, we're just calling a visitor so that we don't want to identify just one category, because we don't want to, you know, miss a particular...all visitors will be treated the same way. They have to be scanned in and receive this temporary visitor badge. So that's new policy, 3210, up for first read. And then the final one up for a first read tonight is 8210, Safety Conditions and Programs. In the very first sentence, it references that the district will provide as an integral part of the instructional program, fire prevention, emergency procedures, safety instruction for students. But it said driver education, and we actually no longer provide that as part of the curriculum, so we need to remove that. That doesn't mean, though, that the district doesn't still provide driver and vehicle safety programs to students K through 12. For example, the Transportation Department does a great program in the summers...in the summer for our kindergarten students, learning how to cross the street and get on the bus and things like that, right up through senior year. If you want to get a pass to park in the senior lot, you have to pass a distracted driver course. So it's...driver and vehicle safety is still embedded in the program, but we just don't provide driver education. And then we deleted the paragraph about how that students shouldn't have to stare directly into a laser pointer, just because we felt that was outdated, and it was probably a reactionary policy at the time, because laser pointers were scary. I don't know when that was adopted, but we just thought that was a little outdated, so...but these policies for a first read, that the community is welcome to make comments before we go to a second read and potential adopt. And then we have policies for second read, and...yep.
Thank you, Camille. There, we do have policies for second reading and approval. And I want to point out to the folders that you have on your tables here regarding policy 7640...7640, I want to say, and, you know, the one that I pointed out in the email that has new language because of the feedback we had. Am I correct with the...
Yep.
Yeah. I'm sorry. 7645, the RTI one, that is correct. Okay, so please pay attention, you know, to the new language. The most recent one is in the folder you got this evening, not the one we got in our packet. So the policies that are here for second reading and approval, 7640, Student Individualized Education Program and Regulation, 7641, Transition Services, 7642, Extended School Year Services and/or Programs and Regulation, 7645, Response to Intervention, 7650, Identification and Register of Children with Disabilities. And then we also have regulations that accompany the...some of these policies. And then we have 7660, Parent Involvement of a Student with a Disability, and Regulations. So as you know, we vote on policies, not on regulations. However, regulations give us more information, you know, and are always shared with us. Did we receive any comments about these policies? Dr. Putnam, Jim, anything?
No.
No? Okay. So at this time, please, may I have a motion, please, that those policies that are here for second reading be approved as presented? Questions or comments? Thank you, all those in favor. Seven in favor, none opposed. Thank you. Approval of the PHS Course Guide. Our last meeting in December, December 9th, the Penfield High School Course Guide was shared with us by Dr. Maloney. May I have a motion, please, that the 2015-16 High School Course Guide be approved as presented at the December 9th, 2014 meeting? Questions or comments? Thank you, all those in favor. Seven in favor, none opposed. Thank you. Approval of Salary Increase. The Board of Education authorizes salary increases for food service staff and hall monitors. Increases are in accordance with New York State law minimum wage increases, as well as within parameters set by the Board of Education. May I have a motion, please, that the salary increase noted above be approved for food service staff and hall monitor? Questions or comments? Thank you, all those in favor. Seven in favor, none opposed. Thank you. Review of Enrollment Policy, Assurance of Discontinuance. In October, the New York State Attorney General, in conjunction with the State Education Department, began a compliance review of school district's enrollment policies and procedures for unaccompanied minors and other undocumented students. This review initially focuses on downstate districts experiencing large influxes of unaccompanied minors from Central and South America. The review was subsequently expanded statewide. We've had the explanation from Dr. Putnam on why we have this resolution here on our agenda, so I'm not going to go ahead and read everything for you. But at this time, may I have a motion, please, that the Superintendent of Schools is hereby authorized to sign the Assurance of Discontinuance document described in your packet and is further directed to take all necessary steps to ensure compliance with the agreement? Any additional questions or comments? Thank you, all those in favor. Seven in favor, none opposed. Thank you. Donation, Saxophone Case. Mr. Brian Pricow has donated Yamaha Baritone Saxophone Case to the Penfield Music Department. This is a very generous and welcome gift. On behalf of the students, music department, and the district, we wish to express our appreciation to Mr. Pricow. Dynavox Communication System donation. Mr. and Mrs. Dean Latin have donated a Dynavox to the Penfield School District. A Dynavox is a high-tech communication instrument that helps individuals living with speech, language, and learning disabilities communicate. This is a very generous and welcome gift. On behalf of the students, speech, language teachers, and district, we wish to express our appreciation to Mr. and Mrs. Latin. And that's it for donations. President's remark, I only have one. I think we received our invitations for the Legislative Panel in February, and hopefully it is on your calendar. If it is not, please put it on your calendar. And especially that we have workshop on that day. As is customary, it's a whole day of activities for the Board, so, you know, make sure that your calendar shows that, so that we're all here.
We were going to let Marcia send it in for all of us.
Yes, that would be...that would be great. So if you can let Marcia know if you are able to attend, either now or by email, that would be great. Unfinished business. We have our Veterans Tax Exemption. We've had a survey out for the community. We also had, you know, a forum where we invited veterans and any community members to come and express their feelings for or against the Veterans Tax Exemption, and I think that the turnout was really great. We had a portion of the website that highlighted, you know, all the information that we have, and then subsequently, after the forum, that portion of the website was updated with more questions that we have received. And we deferred in December the decisions regarding this Veterans Tax Exemption to this meeting, hoping that there would be more information. At this time, I don't think we have any additional information. Dr. Putnam, Dr. Sansoussi, anything additional? No? No. So Board members, we do need to take a decision regarding the Veterans Tax Exemption. We have three options. One would be to adopt the Veterans Tax Exemption. One would be not to adopt the Veterans Tax Exemption. One would be to table the decision, whether we want to adopt or not adopt. So what would you like to do?
I would move that we tabled the item on the agenda entitled Veterans Tax Exemption.
I agree.
You have a second there.
All right, second there, sorry.
Okay. Any questions or comments regarding this motion?
I'm going to get that first.
Lisa? All right.
Table means it's off the agenda, and it can be brought back on the agenda at any time by a majority vote of the Board.
Is that different from... Should I tell you something? Yes. Sorry. Because if we vote no, we can bring it back at any time, anyway, correct? Right? Because, Mark, isn't that correct, that we can enact this exemption at any time?
Yes.
Okay. Even if we...even if we vote no? That's what I...I might be confused. Thank you, Camille. Thank you, Dr. Putnam.
The question is, every year, as we go through the budget process, the School Board can review the exemption and review their decision and revote on...to offer that exemption. So if the Board voted no for the exemption, then next year around this time, if the Board wanted to put it back on the agenda by a majority vote, it could get back on the agenda for a...another go-around.
The opposite is true. If you vote yes...
Right, we can't.
It's yes in perpetuity.
So tabling and no is the same...not. It's different?
Not really.
Okay. I guess that's where I'm confused.
Yeah, I guess tabling it, we're not taking a decision this evening.
Right, because we're going to...
We're just tabling it.
Okay. I'm good. All right.
So we have a motion on table and a second. Any additional questions or comments? All right. All those in favor? Thank you. Seven in favor, none opposed, on tabling the Veterans Tax Exemption until it comes back with a majority vote of the Board. Thank you. There being no further business, may I have a motion, please, that the meeting be adjourned at 8:55 p.m.?